We're gonna get started.
Quiet, please!
The visitors will retire behind the rail and the members will take their seat. We will get started. We have established a quorum. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Danette Ray of Kingdom Life Christian Center. She is here today as the guest of Councilman Heenan. I would ask all guests, members, and visitors to please rise.
Good morning.
Morning.
We know that in this room we may be interfaith, but it is customary for us to bow our heads as we pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning seeking you before this great body of City Council men and women. We exalt you and glorify you for you are the one and only God. We beseech you today for the wisdom and guidance needed upon every constituent represented here in this room on today. Father, I pray this council will pursue the things which make for peace and the building up of one another. I ask that you will guide them in their decisions and their actions, that they might fulfill your purposes and give honor and glory to you. I ask you to give them wisdom that is from above, first of all, pure, then peace-loving, considerate, submissive, full of mercy and good fruit, impartial and sincere. We pray today, God, for our mayor, city commissioners or county commissioners, our city council and city council president, city planner, planning and zoning board, our judges in the court system, our jails and prisons and detention centers, the protection of our city and county offices and buildings. Lord, I ask that you will protect and defend those who are called to protect and defend us. I pray for our police and our fire departments. I ask, God, and pray for the economy of our city. I pray also for the commonwealth of this city. I ask you on this morning that you will bring justice to the poor and prosperity for everyone within the economic systems of the city of Philadelphia. I pray for the safety of this city. I pray that the citizens will be kept safe from harm and violence on the streets. And I pray that criminals themselves will be transformed. I pray for the politics of the city. I ask you, Lord, to grant wisdom and integrity to the authorities who govern this beautiful city of Philadelphia. And I pray for the restoration of virtue to every public office. I pray for the people of the city. I pray for the Lord's blessing on all people and all groups in the city. I pray for neighborhood by neighborhood, church by church, business by business and house by house. I pray Jeremiah 29:17, that as today, as these lawmakers are in this room and have come together in unity, that they come seeking the peace, the unity, and the prosperity of this city. For if we pray to the Lord for it and if it prospers, you too will prosper. God bless. In Jesus' name, I'm sorry. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Appreciate you, Pastor, for those inspiring words. Council, be these. Again, thank you so much, Pastor. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, January 30th, 2020. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, January 30th, 2020 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, January 30th, 2020. Stand and approve all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that journal is approved. Our next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of members of council, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks to gentlewoman. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business. And I would like to thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to witness their government in action. We genuinely appreciate you coming down, even in this inclement weather. So again, thank you so much for being here today. Today, we have no presentations. I know that is putting a real sad note to a number of our colleagues. So therefore, our next order of business is communications. And the Chair requested the Sergeant of Arms please deliver the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
Gentlemen and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am submitting here with for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution approving Catherine Bitner to the Board of Directors of the Old City Special Services District, and a resolution approving Jonathan Dubrow to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District, and a resolution approving Valerie Lyons to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District, and a resolution approving Garcia Primavera to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District, and a resolution approving the appointment of Deborah Mallor to the Board of Directors of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority, and an ordinance approving the amendment of the fiscal year 2020 capital budget, providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith, subject to certain constraints and conditions, and acknowledging the receipt of the revised forecast of capital budgets for fiscal years 2021 through 2025 as amended, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Those messages will be printed in today's journal. Do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And our next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I introduce one privileged resolution on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privileged resolution also naming the 1600 to 1700 block of West Jefferson Street as Dr. Oscar J. Cooper Way.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gill.
Thank you very much, Council President. I have three privileged resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privilege resolution honoring Mabel Chi Chan and her lasting legacy and contributions to the Philadelphia community.
Today's calendar.
And a privilege resolution declaring February 3rd through 7th, 2020 as National School Counseling Week in the city of Philadelphia.
Today's calendar.
And a privilege resolution declaring February 3rd through 7th, 2020 as National Black Lives Matter at School Week of Action in the city of Philadelphia.
Also on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I have one bill co-introduced by Councilwoman Bass and two resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm just Councilman Men, sorry.
An ordinance amending Section 10602 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Smoking to prohibit establishments that are accepted from the indoor smoking prohibition from permitting minors to enter and to require health informational signs. And amending Section 10614 entitled Electronic Smoking Devices to prohibit establishments that are accepted from the indoor e-cigarette use prohibition from permitting minors to enter and to require health informational signs.
Further committee.
And a privilege resolution recognizing February 2019 as American Heart Month.
And that will be on this week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution also naming East Vanango Street between Edgemont and Salmon Streets as Monsignor Joe Path Way.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Good morning, Council President. I have two privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm sorry. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
That's quite all right, Mr. President. Today, I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Chapter 9 of Subcode PM, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, of Title IV of the Philadelphia Code entitled Additional Special Requirements to Establish requirements for Managers of Certain Buildings Pertaining to Identification of Occupants to Better Assist Responders During Emergency Situations.
And that bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have two resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you very much.
A privilege resolution authorizing the Committee on Children and Youth to hold hearings to examine issues relating to missing and exploited children and youth in Philadelphia.
Today's calendar.
And a privilege resolution recognizing South Philadelphia rap group Young Flames for the positive themes in their music, including the anti-violence song Guns Down.
Also on today's calendar. And Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have one bill for today.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance approving the amendment of the fiscal year 2020 capital budget, providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith, subject to certain constraints and conditions, and acknowledging the receipt of the revised forecast of capital budgets for fiscal years 2021 through 2025 as amended.
And that will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Good morning, Council President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gauthier.
Good morning, Council President. Today, I have one privileged resolution, and I'd also like to speak on the resolution.
Certainly. Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privilege resolution authorizing the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless to hold public hearings on the enforcement of and the expansion of protections for renters provided by Philadelphia's Good Cause Residential Eviction Law.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gauthier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take a moment to share more about why I'm calling for these hearings today. A little context for anyone who may not be familiar with the history. In late 2018, City Council unanimously passed a bill protecting renters from eviction and requiring landlords to demonstrate good cause in order to remove tenants from their homes. I want to commend Councilmember Jones for his tireless efforts in getting this bill to a place of consensus, and Councilmembers Bass and Gill for co-sponsoring, and my council colleagues for ushering it into law. The Good Cause Protections went into effect in April of 2019, so the wheels have been in motion for the better part of a year. These hearings will give us the opportunity to check in with the Fair Housing Commission, who's enforcing the law, to understand how the system is working so far. Evictions remain a dire concern in our city, and families continue to struggle on a daily basis. Over 19,000 evictions were filed in 2019 alone. Just think about that. The thousands of lives turned upside down, belongings put on the street, the days of school missed, the jobs lost. Furthermore, our housing market is going through a period of volatile change. For the first time in Philly history, there are now more renters than homeowners, and that number continues to grow. Over half of our city's renters are cost burdened by their housing costs, meaning they pay over 30% of their income on rent. Additionally, 86% of renters making under $35,000 a year are experiencing this burden. The hearings I'm proposing today will give us an opportunity to hear from the Fair Housing Commission, the Philadelphia renters, and from the community at large. We want to make sure that this law is being implemented effectively and explore what can be done to expand the protections that it offers, considering the immediacy of the issue. I want to thank Councilmember Jones for his partnership in this effort, all of the co-sponsors, and this body for considering this resolution. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And that will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. I have two privileged resolutions to introduce today.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Children and Youth to hold hearings regarding out-of-school time programs and funding to improve the safety and contribute to positive life outcomes for Philadelphia's young people.
This week's calendar.
And a privilege resolution honoring and celebrating Philadelphia's future of black history and its young people, and in particular, Michaela Newkirk, Ramire Jones, and Aviana Mitchell as living examples of the future's promise in the Philadelphia area as part of the commemoration of Black History Month.
And also on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions, but on behalf of Councilman Mark Squill, I'll be offering five bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
How many? Questions and one bill.
One.
Short notice. Thank you.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising certain provisions of Chapter 14700 entitled Development Standards by revising bulk and massing controls within CMX IV and CMX V zoning districts.
And that will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing Garcia Primavera to the Board of Directors of the Old City Special Services District.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution appointing Valerie Lyons, non-privileged resolution appointing Valerie Lyons to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District.
That will actually be referred to committee as was the prior resolution.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing Catherine Bitner to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District.
Referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing Jonathan Dubrow to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District.
Also referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer two bills.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending Section 9633 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sale of Electronic Smoking Devices and Unapproved Nicotine Delivery Products to modify provisions concerning enforcement and penalties for non-compliance.
Further committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the striking from City Plan Number 185 and abandonment of a certain right of way reserved for drainage purposes in the area lining east of Pelham Road and southeast of Porter Street, and applying upon the said city plan of a new right of way for sewer and drainage purposes.
Also referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. Offered two privileged resolutions co-sponsored by Councilmembers Green, Don, Gill, Heenan, and... Richardson. Richardson.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy to hold public hearings on the state of Philadelphia's fashion and design industry.
Today's calendar.
And a privilege resolution recognizing the historical significance of Chinatown and honoring the vital contributions of Chinese-Americans on the 150th anniversary of Chinatown in Philadelphia.
And that also will be on today's calendar. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Council President, I would like to ask the young people from Urban Youth Leadership. He's standing, standing recognized today in council session. They are coming to... Can you guys stand? They weren't prepared for that. I think it's important that we continue to allow young people to be a part of the civic process. So I'm inviting various groups of young people to visit during council sessions on Thursday. So thank you to all my colleagues that will be stopping by and have stopped by. And I just welcome these young folks to be here today. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Welcome, welcome. Thank you for coming today. We will now move to our reports from committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker. We'll report from the Committee on Law and Government.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Law and Government reports three bills and three resolutions with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
To the President, members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Law and Government, which is referred Bill Number 200006, entitled an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Home Roll Charter to provide for preference in civil service examinations for any qualified graduate of a career technical education program in the school district of Philadelphia. It is approved by resolution of the City Council fixing the date of a special election for such purpose, prescribing the form of ballot question to be voted on, and authorizing the appropriate officers to publish notices and make arrangements for the special election. And Bill Number 200008, entitled an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia, the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council, proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Roll Charter to provide for the creation of a Department of Labor and a Board of Labor Standards to provide for the powers and duties of such department and board, and to otherwise provide for incorporation of the department and board into the city government. And Bill Number 200015, entitled an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia, proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council, of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Roll Charter to revise and clarify rules pertaining to prohibited activities of city officers and employees, including the restrictions on city officials and employees. Don city officials and employees with respective political activities, and providing for the submission of the amendment to the electors of Philadelphia. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills and resolutions to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 200006, 200008, and 200015.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 20006, 200008, 20015. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Chair again recognizes the Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the placement of Resolution Number 20042 on today's final passage calendar.
Thank you, second. Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the placement of Resolution Number 20042 on today's final passage calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And Resolution Number 20042 will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Resolution Number 200040 and 20056 will be placed on our final passage calendar at our next session of council. Thank you very much. Our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had their first reading. They will be on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. There are no additional bills on our first reading calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up bills or resolutions that are on our final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 200096, 200105, and 200110.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Before voting on these bills or resolutions that are on final passage calendar today, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passage, and I emphasize final passage calendar today, if you have not already done so, you may sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the middle of the council chambers. There's a podium. There's a device on that podium. When the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, I'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines to conclude your remarks. Thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, please read the first name on the list. Oh, by the way, I think three minutes will be your time frame.
Delise Williams. Delise Williams.
Next name.
Jacqueline Wiggins. Commenting on 200096.
Morning. Good. Have to start using Duracell. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
There you go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jacqueline Wiggins. I'm a long-term resident of North Central. I'm also committee person, 32nd Ward, 11th Division. I am speaking in terms of this resolution, this bill 200096 with respect to the North Board Renaissance Becoming, I guess, the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association, you know, for the district. Now, here's the issue. Where did this come from? Now, people have known about North Board Renaissance, but with respect to this, this entity is going to have, what? Overlordship of my neighborhood? While businesses, small, mid-sized, large corporations, institutions, such as Temple University as a large educational entity, the school district of Philadelphia located one block from Spring Garden, which is one of the areas, but houses, or I should say has responsibility for Ben Franklin High School at Spring Garden and Freeira High School at Broad and Dolphin Streets and Mathematics Civics Charter School across the street from the school district. Developers and everyone else selected or handpicked to be a part of this has had access over time. And that means as long as the North Board Renaissance has been in existence, they've had the opportunity to pose questions for clarity. But what has been the access to those people like myself and everyday taxpayers in any of this? More than Broad Street needs the care and attention that this document so comprehensively presents to enliven economic development. What we need is more human development in this city. Treating people well is the first step. Communicating to the people, the everyday taxpayers living east and west of Broad Street about these so-called economic policies and developments is step two. Rolling out such a massive North Broad Business Improvement District demands public neighborhood input. There is nothing more than a progressive plan of overlordship to the thousands of homeowners and residents living east and west of Broad Street. This overreach is placing what has been brokered as transparency without input for the people who live in the targeted area. Most people who have been shopping or taking advantage of the goods and services along North Broad, residents, gas stations, human services, educational services, pharmacies, retail businesses, cultural places like Freedom Theater and the Y, and churches, mosques...
The lack of regard, respect, and communication for the community surrounding North Broad Street is completely inexcusable. These closed-door community meetings and these processes where only individuals who will pose little to no resistance and will likely benefit from the things being proposed are unacceptable. The fact that a lot of people here in council sit back and ignore us because we're critics or because it's not your district, so it's not your constituents, and you want to keep the good relationships, it has to stop. It has to stop. These people have no right to sit here and propose a business improvement district that encompasses Broad Street all the way through the whole entire North Philadelphia without communicating with anybody in the surrounding communities. And then the fact that this will go by a portion of your taxes, not a set amount, when the Office of Property Assessment has already proven to be corrupt, when the dollar slices of pizza me and my kids could go enjoy on Broad Street are already went up to two dollars and fifty cents or three dollars now because of taxes alone. Enough is enough. This is going to affect the price of goods and services. This is going to affect the type of businesses that come into our neighborhood. This could become predatory. Nobody has had a say in it. Enough is enough. How long are you guys going to just sit here and say, oh, there's the girl, she's critical, we're just going to ignore her, or, oh, that's not my district, that's not my constituents, I'm still going to get voted in? Wrong is wrong. And what's going to happen is, I'm tired of running back and forth to the city council at ten o'clock in the morning, and y'all don't start till eleven, and me and my kids starving, and it's a good lesson because we homeschool, but I can't come here every week. I can't come here every week. And what's going to happen is there's going to be an organized resistance and disruption to every member of this council who sits back and turns a blind eye and acts like they don't care about what's going on because it's not their district or because we're just a critic. What I see, these young people, these beautiful young people, we need y'all, not just to pay attention, but we need y'all up there, because these people have lost their mind. I see these kids after school, they're hanging on the buses, they're throwing the tables and the chairs. I don't feel afraid, I feel inspired. I see these men that are shooting people, and they're fighting, and they're drinking and getting high. I'm not afraid, I'm inspired. What I'm going to do is I'm going to come to my community, and I'm going to help them to understand who is the enemy. I want my community to understand that what happens right here on this council floor affects every aspect of our daily lives. Don't be mad at him over there because he's making more money than you or her over there because you had a long day. Be mad at Darryl Clark, 115 Jefferson Street, living his best life. Be mad at Kelvin Jeremiah, paying himself four hundred thousand dollars a year to not give anybody housing, running the housing authority when the federal government caps off housing executive salaries at one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars a year. You got beef taken to the right place. I'm going to build a movement. There's going to be a movement.
Thank you for your testimony.
Joe Dennehy. Commenting on two zero 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 nine six.
This is an official decree of the people, remandamus quo larto, as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, this council, mayor, governor, and others transfer private property to government, probably unlawfully. Was it announced last week that the celebration of the Nineteenth Amendment, which welcomed the previously oppressed peoples to seats of power? I and others look around you, see for decades that there are same old problems. Are those newly-elected oath-bound officials turning into the very oppressors they were elected to correct? Are those oath, sworn oath, sworn oath to God officials taking the advice of the deep state who create these very problems? Accountability and your oath require you to immediately prosecute all law violators. That is why the new leadership was hired. The constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. Forty-two U.S.C., nineteen eighty-two, nineteen eighty-three, nineteen eighty-five, nineteen eighty-six, nineteen eighty-seven, eighteen U.S.C., two forty-one, two forty-one, two forty-two, twenty-three eighty-one, twenty-three eighty-four. P.A. Constitution, Article One, Sections One through twenty-eight, twenty-six, P.A.C.S.A. seven oh three, seven oh five, seven oh eight, seven oh nine, seven eleven, seven twelve, seven thirteen, seven sixteen, nine oh two, and other laws listed in SCOTUS fifteen eighty-nine sixty-five, fourteen one three three oh, fourteen four oh five six appear violating. I call on the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all in this very room who were involved in the theft and the legal deed transfer of my home, ten thirty-eight West Wyoming Avenue. The denial of God given forty-two U.S.C., nineteen eighty-two property rights for twenty-six years is egregious, extraordinary oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color-of-law government must have its charter of government revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty act any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require oath, constitution, law being enforced, and your time in jail is required for all who violate their oath, constitution, or law. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow monumental corruption. And look around, you need a mirror.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you. We will now move to our calendar. And Mr. Decker, can you please read the title of two zero 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 nine six?
A resolution initiating action to establish a neighborhood improvement district in an area that generally includes both sides of North Broad Street, from the north side of Spring Garden Street to the south side of Indiana Avenue, excluding the twenty-seven-hundred through twenty-nine-hundred blocks on the west side of the street, beginning with five-ten North Broad Street and continuing to twenty-nine, twenty-nine North Broad Street, and certain blocks or streets that intersect portions of these streets, designating North Broad Renaissance, the legal name of which is Avenue North Renaissance Incorporated, which has organized itself as a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district, approving a plan for and report concerning the district, authorizing the Director of Commerce on behalf of the city to execute an agreement with North Broad Renaissance relating to the district, and authorizing North Broad Renaissance to assess property owners within the district, a special property assessment fee to be used in accordance with the approved plan, all in accordance with the provisions of the Community and Economic Improvement Act, all under certain terms and conditions.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Two zero 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 nine six. A motion on the resolution that will initiate action to establish a neighborhood improvement district has been approved. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two zero zero one oh five.
A resolution urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to enact House Bill twenty-one forty, which would protect against construction-related damage to adjoining properties by requiring contractors to purchase surety bonds.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution two zero zero one oh five has been adopted. Mr. Decker, two zero zero one one zero.
A resolution supporting the National League of Cities, cities, leading together cities' agenda for the two thousand twenty U.S. presidential election.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution two zero zero one oh five has been adopted. Mr. Decker, two zero zero one one zero.
A resolution supporting the National League of Cities, cities, leading together cities' agenda for the two thousand twenty U.S. presidential election.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution honoring Mabel Chi Chan and her lasting legacy and contributions to the Philadelphia community introduced by Councilwoman Gimm.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution declaring February third through seven, two thousand twenty, as National School Counseling Week in the city of Philadelphia, recognizing the critical role that school counselors play in meeting students' academic, social, emotional, and post-secondary planning needs, introduced by Councilwoman Gimm.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution declaring February third through seven, two thousand twenty, as National Black Lives Matter at School Week of Action in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Gimm.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing February two thousand nineteen as American Heart Month and recognizing the American Heart Association for their work on educating Philadelphians about the risk of heart disease, introduced by Councilman Heenan. Council, introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Children and Youth to hold hearings to examine issues relating to missing and exploited children and youth in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing South Philadelphia rap group Young Flames for the positive themes in their music, including the anti-violence song Guns Down, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless to hold public hearings on the enforcement of and the expansion of protections for renters provided by Philadelphia's Good Cause Residential Eviction Law.
I'm sorry, Mr. Decker, I wasn't. Read that again.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless to hold public hearings on the enforcement of and the expansion of protections for renters provided by Philadelphia's Good Cause Residential Eviction Law, introduced by Councilwoman Gautier.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gautier.
I wanted to take just one second to correct a prior comment. The original sponsors of the just cause legislation were council members, council members Jones, Parker, and Gimm. So, sorry for that mistake earlier. And with that, I want to move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Children and Youth to hold hearings regarding out-of-school, out-of-school time programs and funding to improve the safety and contribute to positive life outcomes for Philadelphia's young people, introduced by Councilman Thomas.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and celebrating Philadelphia's future of black history and its young people, and in particular, Michaela Newkirk, Ramire Jones, and Aviana Mitchell as living examples of the future's promise in the Philadelphia area as part of the commemoration of Black History Month, introduced by Councilman Thomas.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Again, thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy to hold public hearings on the state of Philadelphia's fashion and design industry, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. Like Councilmember Gautier, I'm going to make a correction as well. It was co-sponsored by Councilmembers Green, Dom, Gimm, Heenan, and Gilmore Richardson. And with that, I move for the option of the resolution.
Thank you. It was moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the historical significance of Chinatown and honoring the vital contributions of Chinese-Americans on the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of Chinatown in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for the option of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. We will now move to a floor amendment on resolution two zero 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 four two. Mr. Decker, if you will please read the title of that resolution, two zero zero four two.
A resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Road Charter to provide for the creation of a Department of Labor and a Board of Labor Standards, to provide for the powers and duties of such department and such board, and to otherwise provide for incorporation of the department and board into the city government and providing for the submission of the amendment to the electors of Philadelphia.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm for her motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to resolution number two zero 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 four two. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. The amendment focuses primarily on the Board of Labor Standards, which has been in existence within the code for over two, twenty years, and we are moving it into the charter to consolidate. But great comments were made at our initial committee hearing that will expand the diversity of the members of the board to reflect the full range of potential appeals that will be heard by the Board of Labor Standards. I also wanted to clarify to members that, again, as the Board of Labor Standards has been in existence for over twenty years, it is only an appeals board, it does not set labor standards. We do that. The mayor's Department of Labor can do that, but they, they are an appeals only and will only hear individualized cases. And additionally, finally, the want to convey that the members of this board will reflect and represent the diversity of the city and direct experiences in the fields that will be reviewed before them. So I wanted to thank my council colleagues for working together on that, and many of our advocates as well. And with that, I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second that the amendment to resolution number two zero zero four two be adopted. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. The resolution has been amended. This resolution will be placed on our final passes calendar at our next session of council. That completes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? And speeches on behalf of the majority? Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. My rise this afternoon to thank my colleague, Councilman Green, for introducing resolution number two zero 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 five two, which is authorizing the Committee on Public Safety to address and look at the Man Up Philly movement started by Solomon Jones. I'm sure my colleagues want to talk about it, so, but I really want to thank him for pushing this issue, and here's why. When you look at the fact that, I'm not even going to go with the fatal shootings, which there were three hundred and fifty-six, but think about the non-fatal shootings of fourteen hundred and sixty-six individuals shot last year. These are life-changing events, even if you have post-traumatic stress syndrome as a result, or if you are forever hampered within your motion and even lose your limbs, that changes your whole family. That's not just you, that changes your whole family. So I'm really thankful that Councilman Green and Solomon Jones, along with you and Councilman Johnson, are bringing this issue to the forefront. And I look forward to seeing everyone Tuesday at Christian Stronghold Baptist Church at six P.M. And I would hope that we don't just regurgitate the problem. I want us to come up with solutions, collaborations, bringing light into those programs that are positive to scale so that they impact more people. So again, thank you, Councilman Green, for, for really moving us to this hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes the aforementioned Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilmember Jones. I want to initially thank you and Councilmember Johnson for your work in this area, both through the special committee, from the work you've done here in council, and also Councilmember Johnson for your work through your nonprofit Peace Not Guns, well before you became an elected official of this body or a member of the State House. I have continued that push, we're trying to address violence in the city of Philadelphia. I have continued that push, we're trying to address violence in the City of Philadelphia. We do have a new police commission that'll be coming to the city, but we've had a major increase in the number of homicides in our city. Councilman Jones gave the number of three fifty-six, which is the number of homicides in two thousand nineteen. We had a hundred, one thousand four hundred and sixty-six shootings that were non-homicide-related. That's a forty percent increase since two thousand thirteen. So something is definitely going on. Members of this body are doing all that they can to provide additional resources to address these issues, but also we need to work with those who are trying to do a more grassroots, bottom-up approach. And so I thought it was important to have this conversation in the community. We'll be at Christian Stronghold on Tuesday at six P.M., which is forty-seven oh one Lancaster Avenue, and really get a sense of the initiatives that have been started and how we work on peer-to-peer mentoring with young people, especially African-American men and boys, in trying to address gun violence in our city. But this issue is not just a public safety issue. It also ties into economic development issues. And when people talk about the City of Philadelphia and they hear about these numbers, that impacts us from an economic development perspective. Too often, we talk about these issues in silos when they're all interconnected. Poverty, public safety, economic vitality are all tied together, and it's important to have this conversation that all hands are on deck trying to address this issue. So I look forward to the conversation on Tuesday, and look forward to the ongoing conversation as we try to address this issue. And one other point I want to also remind people, tomorrow morning at nine A.M., across JFK at the Municipal Services Building, we'll be having a blood drive. I got this idea from following Councilmember Squilla, who had a blood drive last year, as someone who's been giving blood for a number of years, going back to my days in law school. It's a very important issue, and making sure that we have blood supply for those, especially those who have very unique types of blood, those who are dealing with sickle cell and other issues. So for those of you who are able to participate, it's tomorrow at nine A.M. to two P.M. at the Municipal Services Building. For those who are not familiar, that's four two oh one JFK. We'll be on the sixteenth floor, so please hopefully you can come out and give blood and help people in your community who vitally need blood. Thank you, Counsel President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gautier.
Thank you, Counsel President. Before we close, I want to take a moment to address an issue in my district that is deeply concerning to me. Late last year, the Philadelphia Housing Authority announced its plans to sell two of the three buildings that make up the West Park Apartments at Forty-Sixth and Market. The bidding process began on Monday and will continue through the end of the month. P.H.A. is working with a national for-profit firm to market these properties, and the sale announcement reads "profit-driven," expressing no preference for equitable development or any commitment to avoiding displacement of vulnerable communities. Additionally, to my knowledge, efforts to engage stakeholders in the surrounding neighborhoods to get their input on this deal have been severely inadequate. West Park is a place that families and individuals have, have called home for over fifty-five years, and hundreds of residents could be displaced as a result of this transaction. Additionally, publicly-owned real estate assets like the West Park Development are the biggest tool that we have in government to thwart the negative effects of gentrification in our neighborhoods. This is why I am so deeply troubled that this sale is being rushed through with inadequate thought and care given to the possible repercussions. There is so much at stake when it comes to the sale of this parcel. The area around Forty-Sixth and Market is likely to become a hot area for development in the next few years due to a number of other projects in the development pipeline, amenities near the site, particularly the Forty-Sixth Street L station, and the fact that it is in an opportunity zone, driving investors from all over the country towards profit-motivated real estate projects at the site. P.H.A. has promised that there will be a one-for-one replacement of the housing units, but as of now, we've seen no concrete public commitment to that effect. When we talk about displacement, we're not just talking about residents being forced to move to new locations or being priced out. We're talking about the social and cultural fracturing and disruption of our communities, most often communities of color. We will not be satisfied by any one-for-one plan that doesn't allow these families to stay in this community where many of them have lived for generations. Further, to whom the towers are sold and what is put in their stead absolutely matters for the future of equity in the third district. I am calling on P.H.A. to not just sell this site to the highest bidder. The authority has a responsibility to its tenants. It has a responsibility to the surrounding community, and it has a responsibility to all of us to provide transparency in its dealings. It is not too late to be thoughtful about next steps here and to incorporate the important voices of my constituents. Lastly, I want to be very clear that I will do everything in my power to protect the residents of the third district, and I look forward to hearing from P.H.A. on these matters.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm sure you'll be getting a phone call today. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you very much, Counsel President. Thank you very much to all my colleagues for some really exciting work that is ahead. I just wanted to share with my colleagues that yesterday I was in Harrisburg for, for part of the governor's statewide juvenile justice task force. And this is an important issue that I want to include all of my council colleagues on, particularly members of children and youth, public safety, and special committees on gun violence. There's no question that the crisis and emergency that we're facing in our city has disproportionate impact on our youth, both many of whom are not only victims but also witnesses to the inability for adults who can, should, and must do better to take appropriate action. And the consequences often lie within our juvenile justice system. This is, yesterday was only the start. It involves several members of the Philadelphia area, but probably not enough, and we are a enormous constituency within the juvenile justice system of the state of Pennsylvania. My commitment is to bring that work here locally to ensure that no matter what the recommendations of the task force may be, that it helps launch an important conversation that we need to have locally about the kind of work that we do in collaboration with our district attorney, with our police department, and with our new chief of school safety at the school district of Philadelphia, Kevin Bethel. And the most important thing I think that we need to talk about is that when it comes to the safety and care of young people, we do not have an anti-violence strategy. We do not have one that is confident and uplifting and wholesome and dealing with outcomes for young children rather than systemic kinds of issues. And I think that our concern is to put the focus on young people, to elevate their voices. We expect to have a public hearing in the City of Philadelphia involving young people, and welcome all my council colleagues to be partners in that effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Counsel President. Last night in South Philadelphia, my district, Twenty-Fourth and Feltre Street, the life of a young man, we call S.P. Qua, real name was Quadir, life was taken from him, actually early this morning. He was the head chef of an organization called The Black Seed Cafe. And this was a young man who had a beautiful spirit, who changed his life to be a beacon of hope in our community. And so I echo the sentiments of Councilman Curtis Jones, Councilman Green, as well as Councilman Gim, that we all must roll up our sleeves to address this issue of gun violence that's really overtaking our city. Right now, I have the feeling that the bad guys are winning, to be quite frank. And as much work that we do here on the city council, our resolve must be stronger than ever to get rid of these guns and most importantly, keep our young people safe. And I'm not shy to say that if a young person is carrying a gun, and we are trying to give them opportunities to get involved in things that are positive, and if you're not a part of the solution, then you're part of the problem, and you have to go, because at the end of the day, my two toddlers have to be safe. This young man's life was snuffed out while he was in the right place at the right time. This happened while he was opening up his store in the neighborhood, and for me, it's totally unacceptable. This week is also National Gun Violence Survivors Week. On the twelfth, next Wednesday, in the caucus room from ten A.M. to twelve P.M., we will be working with a coalition of gun violence survivors to begin strategizing and advocating on how we're supporting those who has lost their lives, who have been impacted by gun violence. That's a voice that's often not heard of. When we're talking about the issue of gun violence, and at the end of the day, we want to make sure they have a seat at the table and make sure that we're supporting them in, in all ways possible to make sure that we're, they're able to reclaim their lives. We have a lot of young people that are walking around the street right now shell-shocked, dealing with trauma as a result of the gun violence they are seeing in our communities. And so I just wanted to note that that roundtable discussion will be on Wednesday, ten A.M. in the caucus room, and it's all in an effort to put together a coalition of gun violence survivors to make sure we're doing everything possible to support those who need a voice. We can talk about this issue, but also I encourage you to sit down and talk to the victims. Look a mother in the eye when she asks you to come speak at a funeral when she's lost a loved one. Look a father in the eye when he needs someone to talk to when he has to go identify the body. Go to the family's house and talk to the family as they lost a loved one to the census acts of gun violence. Thank you very much, Counsel President.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Well spoken. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Counsel President. I just wanted to take a minute to commend my colleague, Councilwoman Jamie Gautier, not just for her courage as it relates to this issue, but as, but also her level of advocacy. I too am very concerned about the sale of that particular piece of property. I'm very concerned about the housing crisis that we face in the City of Philadelphia, and I too am concerned about the treatment to renters across the City of Philadelphia. And I just wanted to echo her concerns, and I wanted to let folks know that I will be supporting her in whatever effort that she comes up with to assure that the residents in that house are not displeased. I also wanted to offer my support to my colleagues who are doing the work in the different initiatives around gun violence in the City of Philadelphia. I wanted to thank Councilman Jones for his support and his work ethic as it relates to informing the freshman members of council of all the initiatives that take place, as well as Councilmembers Johnson and Green for the different initiatives that they've been a part of. And I just wanted to also echo their sentiments and their concerns as it relates to this issue and to let folks know that I'll be rolling up my sleeves and prepared to fight this fight until we no longer have the perception that the bad guys are winning. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilman. That concludes the speeches on behalf of the minority and majority, and the chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourn until Thursday, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty, at ten A.M.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second. That council stand adjourn until Thursday, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty, ten A.M. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you all very much.